Madam Town Clark, are you ready?
Ready.
Great. We will reconvene the Parker Town Council for November 18th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. All council members are present. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have a very special presentation. So if you're part of the Citizens Police Academy, don't sit down. Come on down and join me. And I know we have Commander Peters, we've got Bree Rock. I think you guys have already gotten your coins and your certificates, right, and everything? And your Freedom Back Coins? Oh, Bree didn't give you your 25 cents?
We did pins.
Oh, you've got pins?
Yes, yes.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys. Welcome. Well, so welcome to the 2024 Fall Citizens? I'm looking at you, Commander.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right. He's the one, the guy that keeps me honest here. So we just want to say thank you. Thank you for your commitment. And I finally am going to get this right, for your 13-week commitment.
Fifteen.
Damn it. Then it's wrong on the website, because I looked it up today.
Oh, God.
Okay, all right.
All right, we'll get that repaired.
So thank you for your 15, 18, 21, whatever week commitment. We know that you got to learn a lot, everything about the police department, from professional standards, which is Commander Peters' area, to our accreditations, to going into the CSI room and the evidence lockers. Did y'all get to do your ride-alongs yet?
Yep.
Okay. Did y'all get to go out in the cars and do the high-speed chases? Excellent, excellent. And did everyone go out to the shooting range?
Yeah.
That'd have been cold out there right now, right?
Right. It was a few weeks ago. It was a nice day.
Excellent, excellent. Well, glad you got there. You know, Officer Britton is the one that got me out there with my first AR-15. I have been hooked ever since, but haven't been back out. We just want to say thank you, though, for the time commitment that you put in. You know, 15 weeks of it is a long time. I've been through the Citizens Academy. I think Mayor-elect Rivera has been, Councilmember Hendricks has been, Councilmember Barrington and Wilkes have been. I don't know, Diak, Hefta, what's the deal? Can we get you guys in a spot here? Yeah, John's like, nope, 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 nope. But you know, what I like to say is, you know, that it's great fun, it's a great education, it's a great learning experience. But now, with great opportunities come great responsibilities. Now you're the ambassadors to the police department. So now it's incumbent on you to be out there and saying, when you hear something that just doesn't sound right about our Parker Police Department, and you hear it, right, you see it on Nextdoor, you read it on Facebook, it's incumbent upon you now to say, you know what, I spent 15 weeks with these guys. I know the truth, and here's the truth. And when you see them, and you know, just to show our officers love, you know, policing isn't getting any easier, in this state, in this country, and really in the world. So we appreciate that you came alongside them to learn what they do, but now it's more important that you come alongside them with your prayers, if you're a praying person, with your kudos, with your love, with your admiration, and really showing what the Parker Police Department does. So Commander, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you again. I think I told you so many different times throughout the program how much I love working with the Citizens Academy. We do around about 30 different outreach programs throughout the year. You know, they're usually a couple hours here at one day, they're one-offs. These are, this is the long commitment, this one. And I really appreciate it. It fills my bucket. I really hope you guys got a lot out of it. And I always like throwing out the numbers. Eight hundred and ninety-one is how many we've graduated now with you guys. Thirty-five different academies. So thank you. Thank you so much for dedicating so much time to it, and hope to see you around a lot more. But yeah, it's been great.
And I think I made this mistake one time four years ago, and I promised I'd never make it. Let's hear it for Bree Rock, who I know. Will you come in and get in this picture?
No, I'd be happy to take the photo.
I thought one time I'd get her in one. All right. They'll direct us, and we'll scoot in. I'm gonna stand by you, because I'll feel really tall.
Come on in.
Okay. We need to squeeze in?
Yeah, maybe some from the side.
Yeah, I'm good. Why am I running into you?
Should we all twist and turn? Everybody say AR-15.
All right, sorry, guys. All right, ready? Okay, you're good. Thank you.
All right, any family members needed before we just, okay, you got it? Yeah, all right. All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
This will be your fastest?
Absolutely.
All right, we'll move on to public comments. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to the first 30 minutes of the meeting, and you'll have a maximum of three minutes to speak. You must sign up ahead of time in order to comment, but we will call you out of the audience if necessary. And if we go over 30 minutes, we will, a lot more time at the end of the meeting. So right now, I have no one signed up for public comment, but is there anyone in the room wishing to make public comment? Randy Seal, you want to? Okay, all right, all right. All right. Seeing none, we'll go to reports, items, and comments from Mayor and Town Council. So I'm going to start for one, and I am going to say, we had an election two weeks ago, and I just want to congratulate Mayor-elect Joshua Rivera, the eighth mayor of Parker. And Councilman Rivera and I met earlier, and he knows he has my full support.
Thank you.
And I'll always be rooting for Parker, and I'll always be rooting for you, sir. So I know you'll do amazing things for the town of Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that very much.
With that, we'll go with Mayor-elect Rivera. We'll start you.
Thank you. Starting back a week ago today, a few of us were at Cimarron's annual Veterans Celebration, which is always outstanding. They really do put on an amazing show, and the band is getting better and better, especially since my kids left. Just kidding, they're actually good.
But no, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a great show. Kimmy Sharp, she's a great music director.
The band does really well up there. Chris Zimmerman, obviously leading the whole charge as principal. I always appreciate attending Cimarron's Veterans Day. On Tuesday, we had the Cherry Creek Watershed Conference, just over here at Town Hall. The Cherry Creek Watershed stretches from northern El Paso County all the way down to the reservoir, and then all the way down into Denver to the confluence. And so all of the water that we water our lawns with, and all the water that falls on our rooftops from rain and snow, ends up in the Cherry Creek Watershed. The entirety of Parker sits in the watershed. And so the watershed conference every year is fascinating. We had a slew of speakers, and just because council won't let it die, we had, we had one engineer, sorry, engineer, well, lots of engineers, but we had one professor from CU, Aditi Bhaskar, who is actually doing a study, along with a doctoral student, on the Westro Gulch, an opportunity to track down how stream flow changes during dendritic development. So there it is. It was in the conference, but she is actually studying. We have a part of Parker that was developed in a dendritic style, which means we use the ridge lines and nature to remove the water and not put in big, expensive pieces of concrete to do what Mother Nature already does. And she's studying how that changes as the development advances on. So it's an incredible study. It's obviously a study in years of the making, and I look forward to seeing what her outcome is. So thank you all for that.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yes. So also, I would like to congratulate Mayor-elect Rivera and our other newly elected, not newly, re-elected council members. And I would like to make a correction. I did not attend the Police Academy, so sorry for taking credit for that. I thought you said Civic Academy. I was, so, and then over the, I've been out of town for the last 10 days, so I've missed many things going on in town. But Councilmember Wilkes and I attended the 100th anniversary of the NLC, National League of Cities. And since I didn't get to wear these there, I'm going to wear these for the rest of the meeting tonight. Just kidding. My dog, my dog barked at me when I had those on yesterday. So, but anyway, it was a very informative week. We had a lot of fun, learned a lot. I look forward to bringing back a lot of what I learned at maybe the next retreat. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Thank you, Mayor. Attended the Parker Senior Center liaison, I'm a liaison for Parker Senior Center, the board meeting, excuse me. Also attended with others, Parker Chamber of Commerce Member Appreciation Party, and then with Mayor-elect Rivera, I attended the World Day of Remembrance at O'Brien Park for road traffic victims.
Councilmember Diak?
Thank you very much. On the 5th, I had a lunch with E47 Executive Director Joe Donahue. Joe is under a year into his position. It's just more of a discussion as to big picture what E47 is, and other board-related items. On the 14th, E47 had a Board of Directors meeting. We had a third-quarter financial review. Seems like traffic is trending up a little bit, which is good. But again, inflation is, is creating higher expenses. So again, I think, as everybody knows, those are challenging things. We also have a new transponder vendor. Your old transponders, if you're an E47 customer, will still, still work. We're just going to seamlessly transition to a new vendor. On the 14th, I attended the Parker Chamber Member Appreciation with a couple of the council members. And then on the 15th, we had a Town of Parker Investment Advisory Meeting. We have two citizens who are in the financial industry come in and meet with our financial advisor. They, they ask questions, they ensure that our policy is being adhered to and consistent. Staff is there as well. Michael, I hope I didn't say anything bad or incorrect there. But, and then today, the 18th, the mayor, as well as myself, attended an elm tree dedication. We lost a pretty significant tree right in front of the schoolhouse, and we had a woodcarver create art. So if you're, if you're out and about, you can take a look at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
Yeah. On November 6th, I, the Chamber of Commerce had their first Women's Experience Graduation Ceremony, so celebrating just women in business in, throughout our town, and how they were growing. And it was a pretty amazing program that I'm excited to be a part of next year. And then on the 7th, I attended the Simon Pure Amish Furniture Ribbon Cutting, and that furniture is so incredibly gorgeous. And I entered the raffle to win the table. I'm assuming I didn't win, because I haven't been notified yet. But if you guys want some Amish furniture, it's right here in Parker, and it's beautiful. And then, like Councilmember Barrington said, we attended the NLC Conference, and I'm excited to bring all of that information to you guys in January.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yeah. So I just want to go over a couple of things, since I wasn't at the last meeting, a couple of things I've been doing this month. I did attend the Douglas County Homeless Initiative Meeting this past week. We did go over statistics for students that are homeless or couch surfing in Douglas County. Two hundred and sixty-nine students were served in some manner in the last year on that matter. And what I mean in some manner is by the McKinney-Vento Act. That's a federal act, which attaches certain benefits to that. We had the McKinney-Vento folks come and brief us on that at the homeless meeting. We did achieve functional zero with veterans homelessness in Douglas County. And there, we, Douglas County is partnering with a new family tree to help homeless families as well, and they're going to have a grand opening here in, on November 20th. We did do a briefing with the mayor and Councilmember Rivera to the elementary school students that came here to learn about government, which is wonderful. I did attend a Veterans Celebration Day with the Douglas County Commissioners. And as a follow-on of that, I did coordinate with them, and I was subsequently asked by the Heroes Hall Foundation to sit on their board. The Heroes Hall Foundation is going to be a $15 million project occurring in Castle Rock for veterans. That is a nonprofit organization. And you can also read about that in the paper, and that goes, and they have a website on that as well. I did attend the Seacor Care's Annual Fall Event Fundraiser, and also toured the Parker Task Force Building several weeks ago with Councilmember Rivera. They have a wonderful, new, improved, updated building. And just of note, they do have Douglas County Human Services in that building two days a week to help folks in need that can't necessarily make it down to Castle Rock.
All right. Thank you, council. We will move on to Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda item are, I'm sorry, consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So council, you have items 5A through 5G for your consideration.
You guys gotta learn sometimes.
And just for clarification, it is 4A through 4G. Mr. Mayor?
It's iPhone, sorry.
Well, okay.
Oh.
Look at him.
I have the old agenda, sorry.
The attorney is defeated, and the mayor wins on this one. Thanks, Jamie. 5A through 5G.
Okay. I move to approve consent agenda items 5A through 5G.
Second.
Motion is made by Wilks, seconded by Hendricks, Rivera, Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Diak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes 6 to 0. We have two public hearings on the budget tonight, so I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at 7:16 PM on ordinance number 1.593.2 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2024 revised budget for the Town of Parker and to make appropriations for the same. Madam Finance Director?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Chris Viandaca, Finance Director. This first item is regarding the 2024 budget amendment, which will be the second of two revisions to the budget for this year. This is the authority and code that allows for additional appropriations or changes to the budget by ordinance during the fiscal year. And as I mentioned, there was a revision done in the first quarter of 2024. This is a summary of the changes that are being requested, and we'll go into more detail on the next few slides. But for the General Fund, Recreation Fund, and Public Improvement Fund, there is a net zero impact to the fund balance as related to these revisions. For the Excise Tax Fund and Facility Internal Services Fund, there is a supplemental appropriation on the expenditure side, that is only on the expenditure side, and that additional budget will come from the fund balance. Small writing here. I'll apologize. I'll go into some explanation. For the first section, the General Fund, we're requesting an increase to revenue and expenditures for funding received from Douglas County for the Fall Fest Drone Show and the associated costs with that. So it's an in and out of $17,500. Again, net impact of zero to the General Fund. In the Recreation Fund, a grant was received from the State of Colorado for an upgraded day camp bus camera and other program supplies. So this reflects the revenue from the grant and the expenditure out for those items for $7,023. In the Public Improvements Fund, a $250,000 grant was received from CDOT for revitalizing Main Street. And then Parker Authority for Reinvestment Funds have been contributed as grant match. So this entails increasing the expenditure appropriation in par for the match of $250,000, along with, within the Public Improvements Fund for $250,000 that will be for the grant. So the combined effect is $500,000, but again, an in and out in that fund. Public Improvements Fund continues to the next slide. There is a waterline relocation work needed on Motzenbacher Road that is part of the Drensveld Extension Project, and this will be reimbursed by Parker Water and Sanitation District for a total of $125,701. And then the next three lines indicate the decision to decrease funding in two projects for North Parker Road and Pine Lane Bridge, and reallocate the funding to the Lincoln Widening Project, as the costs are coming in higher than anticipated for Lincoln. So this was discussed with you all in Public Works at the October 28th study session. So this was just moving from two projects into Lincoln. Again, net effect zero. So with all of those changes to the Public Improvements Fund, it is a net zero impact to the fund with revenue and expenditures. For the Excise Tax Fund, we are requesting a supplemental appropriation of $160,050 for an excise tax credit for Segment 1 Regional Trail in the Looking Glass Subdivision. Per Town Code, there is an excise tax rebate program whereby a residential developer can request a rebate against the town's excise tax for the construction of certain recreational facilities or trails. And this project qualified for that. So we are requesting the appropriation in order to pay that credit. And that will be strictly a draw on fund balance from the Excise Tax Fund. And lastly, there is a small supplemental appropriation requested for the Facility Service Fund related to increased costs for custodial supplies. So this will also come out of the fund balance, and there is adequate fund balance in both of these funds for those items. And that is all I have for you on this one.
All right. On the revised budget, questions? Councilmember Diak?
Thank you. No questions. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Rivera?
No questions.
All right. With that, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:21. Anyone from the public wishing to make comment on ordinance number 1.593.2? Seeing none, we'll close it at 7:21 and come back with any final comments in that reverse order. Councilman Rivera?
No. It's good to see the amenities Excise Fund in action. It's done to incentivize the amenities for neighborhoods go-in before the houses, so they are there from the beginning and not something that's waiting to be done. So I'm glad to see that in action and working. That's all I have.
Councilmember Barrington?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
No, just addressing, you know, the inflation for the custodial services. When, when I think about everything they do to maintain all the facilities, and I see that small amount, I'm actually very happy about that, because we all know how the inflation has increased. So I appreciate that you guys have taken the time to really narrow that down to exactly what it needs to be. So thank you.
Councilmember Diak?
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.593.2.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.593.2 on second reading.
Second.
Motion is made by Hendricks, seconded by Hefta, Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Diak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes 5 to 0. Next up, we will open up the public hearing at 7:22 PM on ordinance number 1.630 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2025 budget and to make appropriations for the same. Madam Finance Director?
Hello again, Mayor and council members. Chris Viandaca, Finance Director. This is the second presentation and second public hearing on the budget. I will skim over some things a little more quickly, just because this full presentation has already been done, and it is available by recording. The slides that I will be going through tonight will also be available for anyone, the public, to look at on the website. So before I start, I would once again like to thank my finance team, and especially two key players right behind me that you know, Rhonda Willie and Christine Brookshire. Immense amount of work goes into this, as you can imagine, on our side of things, and there are others in finance that contributed a great deal as well. Also want to recognize department heads, and Town Manager's Office, and all of you for the collaboration through this whole process. It's been very impressive for me with my first budget process with the town. So thank you all for that. There are a couple of changes to these slides that I will go over as we go. Most of it is the same. The format will look slightly different, because we felt that the last presentation was a little difficult to view on the projector, and even just the slides in general. So you'll see a darker font, so, and a little more gray shading, just black and white and gray shading, just a little easier to read. So, but I will point out changes as we go. In general, the economy is doing well right now, with another 25 basis point cut by the feds earlier this month. Uncertainty will remain regarding policy changes at the federal level and how that will impact the economy and consumer spending. We are currently experiencing a year-to-date sales tax growth rate of 3.7% for 2024, though we budgeted for a 5% growth. And this is the reason that we are being more conservative in our sales tax projections for 2025, which we'll discuss a little more later. Budget goals and assumptions, mainly to keep fund balances healthy and sustain current levels of service to the community. Regarding town employee compensation, there will be an average 4% increase for civilian employees that is based on performance. So again, an average of 4%. Also, police officer step plans will increase by 2%, and that is in addition to any movement between the steps within a rank, which is 6%. Getting into the budget process, this is a summary of major milestones during the budget process. We kick off with the departments in April-May timeframe, moving into collecting requests for unfunded needs from the departments in early summer. Revenue forecasting starts early in the year, but is refined and finalized throughout the year and through the summer as we receive additional data. We meet with the Town Manager's Office throughout the process and make recommendations, and discuss funding options as into that August timeframe. And then we regroup with departments to discuss proposed funding decisions in about early September, followed by the council budget retreat in early October with two public hearings and further review of the budget during council study sessions and council meetings such as this. After those meetings, the finance team and the Town Manager's Office compiles the budget book for public release and filing with DOLA by the end of January. And this slide just recaps the dates that were just discussed. Getting into special revenue funds, these account for government services that are supported by revenues received and set aside for a legally restricted purpose, and therefore these are not commingled with the General Fund. The Parks and Recreation Fund budget accounts for planning, design, and construction of parks, trails, and recreation facilities. Funding sources include a dedicated 0.5% sales and use tax, along with transfers from the Conservation Trust Fund and the Excise Tax Fund. The projected 2025 fund balance will be approximately $4.2 million, which is much less than the projected 2024 fund balance due to the budgeting for Salisbury Park North construction beginning in 2025. And here is a list of the capital projects for the Parks and Recreation Fund, the largest being Salisbury Park North at $36.25 million. The Recreation Fund includes the administrative functions for all recreation and park design and development activities. The largest source of revenue is charges for services. There is also a transfer from the Parks and Recreation Fund. During 2025, there will be an addition of a full-time recreation administrator for sports that will help manage park and field rentals and dedicate, and provide dedicated customer service for sports leagues and other activities. The projected ending fund balance for 2025 is $2.3 million. sports that will help manage park and field rentals and provide dedicated customer service for sports leagues and other activities. The projected ending fund balance for 2025 is $2.3 million. The next two slides will show the capital projects planned in the Recreation Fund, which include facilities projects and equipment replacement. RC means Rec Center, FH is Fieldhouse, and AQ is Aquatics. And total capital projects are $1.2 million. The mission of the Cultural Department is to enhance the local economic vitality and quality of life by offering unique gathering spaces and providing access to a wide variety of high-quality performances, exhibits, and educational programs in arts, culture, history, and science. The largest source of revenue is charges for services, followed by a transfer from the general fund. Projected ending fund balance for 2025 will be $1.3 million, and there is currently a strategic plan underway for the Cultural Department, and this will help inform a strategy to rebuild that fund balance back up to a higher level. The 2025 budget contains capital expenditures for replacement of stage and audio equipment along with building maintenance and safety upgrades, and the total capital projects is just over $940,000 for next year. Getting into capital project funds, the first is the Capital Renewal and Replacement Reserve Fund, and it is funded by transfers from other funds and can be used to fill budgetary gaps for town facility projects, aging equipment replacement, and public art. Projected 2025 fund balance is $24.3 million. The Public Improvements Fund will show capital and roadway traffic and traffic infrastructure projects budgeted in 2025. Some are continuations and additional funding of projects that have already been started. And I won't read through each project because there are numerous slides, but again, this presentation can be found on the town's website. For roadways and signs, the total budget for that category is just under $27 million, and for traffic signal systems, it's just under $2.4 million. The Excise Tax Fund contains new development excise taxes, and funds are transferred to other funds for the purpose of funding the expansion of roads, parks, or municipal facilities. Projected 2025 fund balance will be $11.3 million. This is a fund that we'll keep a close eye on over the next several years since it is funded from new development, and once that slows down, so will the revenue coming into the fund. Therefore, we have budgeted the revenue growth conservatively for 2025 while also projecting slower growth over the next 10 years. An Enterprise Fund accounts for operations that are financed and operated in a manner similar to a private business. The town has only one Enterprise Fund, the Stormwater Utility Fund. This fund ensures that stormwater systems are properly planned, constructed, and maintained within the town. It is funded largely by stormwater fees collected from residential and commercial properties along with developer contributions to specific projects. And the projected fund balance for 2025 will be $6.2 million. And here is a list of stormwater capital projects for next year totaling $9.9 million. Now we get into the General Fund, which is the main operating fund of the town for general government services such as police protection, public works, community development, building inspection, municipal court, and then general administration of the town. This slide shows the sales tax growth in recent years. The large spikes that you see in 2021 and 2022 represent the post-COVID years when many local governments saw an increase in sales tax revenue related to home renovations and remodeling and increased purchases of consumer goods during that time. Many saw double-digit increases, and Parker certainly did during those two years. We are projecting a 3.5% increase in sales tax revenue compared to our 2024 projected revenue, which is conservative and in line with the actual revenue increases that we are seeing now. This slide shows the top five revenue sources in the General Fund, with sales tax being the largest at 70.2% of total General Fund revenue. Overall growth in the General Fund across all revenue sources is 3.6% compared to 2024 projected General Fund revenue. This slide shows General Fund revenue a slightly different way, just by category. So the percent change in budget column that is the last column is comparing 2025 budget to 2024 budget, whereas that previous slide was comparing 2025 budget to 2024 projected. So on this slide, we're comparing budget to budget, and that is a 5.6% increase in total revenue. On the expenditure side of things, overall expenses are increasing by 4% if you look at that subtotal line. And the reason this percent is low is due to the reduction in expense of capital outlay, which is a more volatile category, higher in some years, lower in other, just depending on the needs of the given year. In 2025, it happens to be decreasing by 35%. So it's keeping that overall expenditure growth low, but you can see in other categories, it is a little bit higher than that. If you look at total expenditures at the very bottom, that includes transfers out, and that is actually decreasing in total by 15% compared to 2024 budget. And that is because in 2024, there was a large transfer out to the Debt Service Fund for the early payoff of a certificate of participation, which did result in a savings of interest expense of $3.3 million, which is very significant. This is a listing of our funding for community partnerships. And this is a listing of the organizational memberships that are included in the budget for next year. This slide has changed slightly since the last presentation, just for clarity. We thought we'd break some things out a little further and subtotal and all that good stuff so that it is a little more clear. This is our salary and benefit changes in the General Fund for next year, and this is comparing to 2024 original budget. So there will be, again, that 4% average increase for civilians that is related to performance pay. And also, the Police Department Officer Step Plans will move or increase by 2% in addition to the movement between the steps that officers may experience within their rank. If an officer is topped out in their rank, they will still receive the 2% because the whole step range is going to move. We also notate the benefit costs, increased retirement contributions, and we are showing during 2024, we budgeted $1 million as contingency in salary and benefits as related to the compensation study. We won't need that in the budget, and again, we're comparing budget to budget, so that is a removal of $1 million from the budget. The total salaries and benefits has been trued up to include any of those changes, so that is all wrapped into these numbers that you see. And then, of course, we're adding the 10 FTEs in the General Fund, which we'll go into on the next slide. So in the Police Department, we are adding one patrol sergeant, two lead communication technicians for dispatch, one emergency manager, one e-discovery technician, one community services officer, and two school resource officers, so eight total added positions for the Police Department, one grants administrator in the Finance Department, and one forestry and open space technician in the Parks Department within the General Fund for that function. This just lists some supply changes for next year, some of which is driven just by electric power equipment mandated by the state, moving from gas-powered small equipment like leaf blowers and things of that nature to electric. And then the General Fund also has some capital purchases that are largely related to adding or replacing equipment, along with repairs and maintenance of town-owned facilities. So I'll show each side briefly. There are three, and again, this presentation will be available on the website for more details. And the total being just over $3.5 million for General Fund capital purchases. This is a summary of the General Fund Debt and Financial Obligation Summary. There are two remaining certificates of participation for 2025, and the top one will be paid off next year, though. This one is paid out of the Recreation Fund, so it will free up $1.1 million going forward, and this was for the Fieldhouse construction. The second COP is for, was for the Police Headquarters construction and Pace Center construction, and that is due to be paid off in 2035. And there is an option for an early defeasance as with the one that was paid off this year, and that can be discussed in 2027 when that is callable at that point. And this is just a general wrap-up of the General Fund, showing the 2025 projected fund balance of $43.3 million or 55%. And this slide was in the November 4th presentation, but it has been revised since then and was discussed at the last study session. But we did discover an error in a formula for this long-range plan calculation spreadsheet. So in that last year, 2034, the revised projected fund balance is 25%, and the previously shown presentation showed 22.9%. So that is a change here, and that error has been corrected. And this version of the slide deck will be available on the website now. And just to point out, with that very high fund balance for 2025, as you can see, it definitely decreases over time, and the 25% being the last year shown here, that 25% fund balance is that threshold that per charter we are not going to go below in the General Fund without further discussion. So we do have to keep an eye on things because that fund balance does decrease each and every year, and it's largely related to projected expenditures coming in higher than projected increases in revenue, especially as growth in the town starts to slow. So this long-range plan is revised each year, and these discussions can, will be ongoing with you all. And this one just shows the total amount budgeted in all funds for a total of $194.7 million, and this does not include any transfers within those funds. And General Fund is 39% of the total. I can take any questions now, and I just would like to say this presentation can, again, be found on the website along with the abbreviated preliminary budget. The full budget document will be posted on the website by the end of January.
Very, thank you, Madam Director. Councilmember Hendricks, you want to kick us off with questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
So how many times have we seen this now?
Several.
Five?
Five? I think so with the study sessions, this is probably the fifth.
And of those five times that we have seen it, has council had any questions or did we need any clarification on any of those numbers?
There were a few questions, but I tried to include the answers to those in this presentation, so if there are more, I'm here.
No, I just wanted, for anyone that's listening, to know that sometimes we have questions and need clarification and don't just always rubber stamp it through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Rivera?
No, I'll just point out that my questions were from last week, or last, two weeks ago, were included in this, so well done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
Thank you. It's, I think my question's more towards, towards this year, the Public Improvement Fund. I think it was roughly $108, $109 million of expenses, and I guess maybe I'll go over to Hudson. Have we ever done that before, like ever, here in Parker?
No.
No. So it's like historic that we've spent so much money on roads.
Off the chart.
Off the chart. All right. Well, sorry that, that we were a construction zone, but I'm, I'm happy that it's, it's winding down and we'll have some new infrastructure for our citizens to enjoy. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions. They've all been very, very thoroughly answered.
Councilmember Hefta?
Just one, if you will give me some latitude, but this is for one of the commanders of the police chief in the room.
Great.
Whoa. Chris is going, I hope I have the answer. I hope I have the answer.
Just because we did see 10 new full-time positions, and eight of those are with the Police Department, so at just at a very high level, tell us the strategic reasoning for that, if you will, in the budget.
Okay, so for next year, you know, a couple of them are dispatchers that were getting busier with calls for service, so we need more additional staffing when it comes to dispatchers, and these positions are supervisory as well, but they're also working supervisors. We have an emergency manager, which is going to, you know, service the entire town. It'll work out of the Police Department, it'll service the entire town. Sergeant, because we are expanding SROs, we're starting a traffic unit, and that's from the 10 officers that we were allotted this year, 2024. One of the things that we've been without for a lot of years is the traffic unit, so that's actually getting launched this Saturday. We're starting that back up, so that's good news. And then e-discovery with all the videos, the body worn cameras, the in-car cameras, all that, it's just becoming so much to make sure that all of these discovery items are sent to the DA's office, defense attorneys, stuff like that. It's just a ton of work, so we gotta just keep up with the times.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Commander. All right, we'll open this up for public comment at 7:45. If anyone from the public wishes to make comment on the ordinance number 1.630? Seeing none, we'll close it at 7:45 and bring back for final comments in that reverse order. Councilmember Hefta?
No, we've gone over the budget many times. We actually had a budget retreat. And many times, some of these, we need new positions as we go forward, as the town increases in population, and as society becomes increasingly more technical, as we've just heard from our police commander. So we do need those full-time positions, and I believe that they are carefully reviewed and studied and, and by our town manager and by you as well, Finance Director. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Wilks?
No comments. You guys do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah, thank you for your, for your assistance on this. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. Sorry, cut me off guard. I just want to say, obviously, the team is absolutely incredible, but Chris specifically, on your first year, incredibly smooth, incredibly painless. I am just in awe that you could come and do $194 million budget and we not see a hiccup. And so, well done to you and your team. Absolutely well done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yep, great, great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.630 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.630 on second reading.
Second. Motion is made by Barrington, seconded by Hendricks, Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero, with no motions in the Rivera comment yet, so. You going all night without a motion?
I'm trying to wean these kids onto, you know.
All right. Not like we haven't had enough of our Finance Director. We get her for one more opportunity here. So ordinance number 1.629 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to levy general property taxes for the year 2024 to help defray the cost of government for the town of Parker, Colorado for the 2025 budget year.
Very good. Thank you. No presentation this time. Good evening again, Chris Fiandaca, Finance Director. So this item is an ordinance to levy general property taxes for the 2024 property tax year to be paid and remitted to the town in 2025. The town's mill levy of $2.602 mills will remain unchanged from the prior year, and Real property taxes remitted to the town become part of the general fund and used to pay for general, general government services such as public safety, public works, and certain aspects of park maintenance. And with that, I can take any questions.
All right, going for questions. Councilmember Dyak, you want to kick us off?
Thank you, no questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
Just for clarification, the, the town can't just raise the mill levy unless it goes to the vote of the people.
That is absolutely correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
No questions.
All right, with that, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:48. If anybody has a comment on ordinance number 1.629. Seeing then, we'll close it at 7:48 and come back in reverse order. Any final comments, Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, I think it's important to, to note what a small piece of the pie property tax is in our general budget. We had 85 million dollars in, in revenues, and 3 million of that is property tax. So I know property taxes were painful in, in the evaluations for folks, but Parker does not see a large amount of that in our coffers. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No more comments, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta, sorry?
No comments.
Councilmember Wilks?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.629.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.629 on second reading.
Second. Motion was made by Hefta, seconded by Rivera, Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Take your break, but we'll see you at the next meeting. All right, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Ordinance number 4.85.6 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend section 11.05.020, 11.05.050, 11.05.060, and 11.05.080 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the Parker Electrical Code. Mr. Sale has a stand-in. Hello, sir, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, John Nelson, Deputy Building Official.
Great, John.
Here to present an ordinance to amend the Parker Electrical Code by adoption of the 2023 NEC.
John, I don't think your mic is on, can you just check at the bottom, the little light should go on?
There it goes. All right, I'll start over. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John Nelson, Deputy Building Official, here to present second reading of ordinance 4.85.6 to amend the Parker Electrical Code by adoption of the 2023 NEC. We, we adopt the electrical code every three year, three years. We're up for adoption on that. The NEC is a benchmark for safe design, installation, and inspection to protect people and property from electrical hazards. It's consistent with best practices. We have some minor amendments that we have updated for clarity. By approval of the 2023 NEC, we'll be able to properly enforce codes and stay current with surrounding municipalities. Many of the other jurisdictions have already adopted the 2023 NEC. With that, staff recommends approval on ordinance 4.85.6 with the second reading. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks, sir. And council, I see Mr. Sale back there too, so you can always call on him too, and if you, why? Councilmember Rivera, you want to kick us off with any questions?
Thank you, John. Anything of note, anything that's outstanding in the difference between 20 and 2023?
No real significant cost changes with that. I will make note that normally we would adopt our building codes during this time. They were a little delayed with the energy code, and there's some model, some state model codes that come with that. As, you know, once we adopt our building codes, we'll be required to adopt. So by not adopting our building codes this cycle, that allows us to be consistent and maybe be more competitive with local jurisdictions when it comes to contractors wanting to construct within the town.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
And for someone to find these codes, it's pretty, pretty, if, it's, where would somebody go if they needed to know?
So we normally keep a copy with the town clerk online, they're available free as well. So it's, it's pretty readily available.
So if someone wanted some light reading?
Yeah.
They could.
Yep, absolutely, and we do contractor updates. So this Thursday, we'll be doing a contractor updates for all of the, the contractors in the town. At that time, we'll push out some of the significant changes to those. A lot of them have, are already currently being done in town as a reflection of other municipalities having already adopted those codes. So we're already seeing the changes done currently in town.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Wilks?
So just for clarification, we're really just cleaning up and coming to the best standards of practice with our building department, especially with the electrical code.
Correct, every three years, they, they update the electrical code, and we adopt those consistently with the state. We try to be within a year. Our building codes are offset one year, so sometimes we delay it one year so that we can present adoption of code one time. This time, we just are delaying our building codes till next year.
And what does this do with our?
The following year, 2026.
Thank you, and what does this do with our current electrical permits that we have outstanding right now?
Those will all be grandfathered in. Enforcement will be based off building permit issue date, unless we have already reviewed a set of plans. It'll be enforced on the date that they submit for building application.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
All right, with that, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:54. If anyone has a comment on ordinance number 4.856 on second reading. Seeing then, we'll close it at 7:54, and we'll go back in that reverse order. Councilmember Hefta?
Yeah, just, just a general comment, you know, all too often here, we've got new construction in Parker, great new restaurants being built, all kinds of new businesses coming. And infrequently, sometimes on social media, unfortunately, the town of Parker gets a bad rap because we're accused of holding up progress. And I just want to say, that's not true.
Well, I appreciate that, we get that a lot. We're the first ones to get the point, the finger pointed at, and really, a lot of our staff goes above and beyond to see projects through. We come up with alternative methods and materials to think outside the box, to make something possible.
Yeah, and thank you for addressing that in my comment, because that's what's really needed, an explanation to the public tonight, that we have to abide by certain building electrical inspection codes. They are state, and they are nationally recognized, and the town has to do that, that's what we have to do. And so those contract, and that's for the safety of everyone. And so thank you for explaining that you work with the contractors to get their buildings in shape and ready to open.
Yes, ma'am, we're available anytime if somebody wants to call and discuss a project.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
No, I, I like that we're, we're setting the standard on what it is to build in Parker, so thank you, guys.
Councilmember Dyak?
No, I, I have no questions. I think this is, this is the time of the season for building and electrical code revisions or supplements, so thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Thanks, keeps everybody safe.
Councilman Rivera?
Thank you, John, I know you're well-respected out there in the field, but enjoy having you in here. And I just got to point out, I love the fact that you're still wearing your Wolverines, but you got a suit jacket and a tie on, so. Well done, sir.
Yeah, this is my first time, so I was hoping there wasn't too much heckling going on.
Where'd you put an eye on?
It'll get smoother over time.
Oh, you did good, thanks, bud.
Did well, sir.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 4.85.6 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 4.85.6 on second reading, please.
Second.
Motion is made by Rivera, seconded by Wilks, Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next up, in typical, typical Patrick Burke fashion, we got a long ordinance to read in, so take your time getting down here, Patrick, no rush.
What happened?
Ordinance number 1.635 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance stating the intent of the town of Parker to acquire certain property interests for the purpose of constructing and improving Hilltop Road through the utilization of the town's power of eminent domain, and directing the town staff and town attorney to notify all persons affected thereby of the above-stated intent of the town and thereafter to comply with all pertinent provisions under CRS Section 38-1-101 at SEC relating to good faith negotiations. You got to sit down for that one, even.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, tried to, tried to keep that one short for you. So this one is an intent-to-acquire ordinance for the Parker Road and Hilltop Road Improvement Project. This is a project that's currently in design. The outlined area here, just a general location. You can see where it's located, primarily the work is on Hilltop, we do have a little bit of work on Parker Road. As I mentioned, this is in final design, we're looking to finalize that design early next year. Project generally consists of adding additional westbound on Hilltop to southbound left turn lane to make that a dual left turn, as well as the associated roadway widening to the north on Hilltop to accommodate that extra lane. We also have an additional dedicated northbound, north to eastbound right turn lane that will be added in there next to where the new sidewalk was just added for a project that's currently going on. So you can see on the image kind of where the work is taking place here. With this widening to the north, there is a little bit of right-of-way there at Pike's Peak Drive on both corners that, that is needed. There's also a little bit of a permanent easement to the east of Pike's Peak Drive, and then a temporary construction easement is needed along that entire path, just for grading and, and construction access. So as I mentioned, our design consultant identified these three parcels where we will need some additional right-of-way and easements to get this project constructed. We're looking at 819 square foot of right-of-way that's required, as I said, on both corners of Pike's Peak. We do have a sidewalk easement, which will be a permanent easement located to the east of Pike's Peak, and that is on the property owned by Core. And then we have temporary construction easement, 7,744 square feet that is required across all three properties. The next couple of slides just kind of show where these right-of-way takes and easements are located. So we have corner clips on both sides of Pike's Peak, that's just to accommodate. The, the widening, we, we are pushing to the north a little bit, so we're having to rework curb ramps and, and curb lines along there. So we identified some additional right-of-way to capture those. The permanent easement, again, it's a small piece on the property that's owned by Core. It's needed for the right, for the sidewalk that's getting realigned through there. And the temporary construction easement, starting from the west, working east here. You can see we have a little bit of area, this is just grading. There's kind of a steeper slope, which is why that's pushed out a little bit farther on that first image on the left. And then as we move to the second property, we have a small piece of temporary that's needed. The reason you don't see it from that point to the east is because there's currently a wall there. We're not touching the, the existing wall that's there, so all of the landscaping that's behind there will remain, so we don't need the easement. And then as we work closer to Pike's Peak, we have some temporary, again, just for grading and contractor access. So this is the, the summary, right-of-way, permanent easement, temporary construction easement. Where we're at now, we have reached out to two of the owners, we've kind of started the dialogue with them. We haven't started with the other. Once this ordinance is approved, we will get out notice of intent letters to all the owners. We will get appraisals ordered, the property owner. I, I don't think any of these will meet the threshold where the town would be required to pay for the appraisal if the property owner wishes to get it, but we'll determine that after we get approval of this ordinance and our right-of-way consultant is, digs into it a little bit more. So we'll notify the owners, we'll get appraisals, and then we will offer fair market value and negotiate with the owners as needed to acquire these easements. And I think this is basically what I said. We'll engage good faith negotiation with the owners. If we're unable to come to an agreement for some reason, we will come back to council prior to any eminent domain action that's not the intent, and I don't, I, I have no reason to believe that we'll need to go that way on this project. I think this will be a friendly transaction between the owners. An ordinance is required to approve this intent to acquire, which will allow town staff to begin those formal negotiations. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Great, thanks, sir. Councilmember Hefta, you want to start us off?
No questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Wilks?
So just for clarification, because I know some people heard the word and they got scared. This is not an eminent domain, this is the pre-negotiations that you feel, based on your experience and communications you've already had, that we're not even going to have to ever go down that path.
That's correct, this is, this is not eminent, this is just so we can start the process, so we can get the appraisals, so we can start talking with the property owners to determine what that, that fair market value is and make offers to the owners.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilwoman Dyak?
Thank you, Patrick, you know, I, I know we're talking about parcels, but everybody, if, if they're out there, they're, when is this going to start construction, when are we going to end? Do you have a timeline on, on this at this early time?
Yeah, I think we're looking, it kind of depends, we have several other larger projects that are getting bid out early next year. We will have plans wrapped up on this one in probably January, February, we'll be looking to bid. I would, I would guess late spring, early summer, and probably complete it prior to the end of the year.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yes. Seems like this has been going on for a while, though, but how, how long has the concept of this been going on? It's, roughly?
We, we kicked off design last year. Chris, I don't know, Chris may have some background prior to that, I know this one was talked about for quite a while.
Evening, Mayor and Council. We did last day the intersection improvement project here in 2003. And at the time, there was no need for a double left to go south. We projected 20 years out, no need. Developments happen, traffic patterns have changed. We've been talking about it for the last 10 years in a cap, long-range capital plan, came up now. So it's been talked about for a while. The improvements, we're trying to squeeze it in in existing right-of-way as much as we can, but there's some small acquisitions that have to happen on this to make it work. So it's been talked about for a while, though.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rivera?
No questions.
All right, with that, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:05. If anyone from the public would like to make a comment on ordinance number 1.635? Seeing then, we'll close it at 8:05, and any final comments in that reverse order, Councilman Rivera?
No, I think it's, it's been stated by Councilwoman Wilks and by Patrick himself, this is just the first step in the negotiations. I know the words eminent domain are in the ordinance, but we, we are here to take care of our property owners.
Councilmember Barrington?
No further comment, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No comment, thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
Nothing but thank you for the presentation.
Councilwoman Wilks?
No, I appreciate the work that you guys put into it.
Councilwoman Hefta?
Nothing, thank you, Patrick.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.635.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.635 on second reading.
Second.
Motion is made by Hefta, seconded by Hendricks, Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. We're going to take the next two ordinance as one presentation, but will there be two votes? So let me read both those in. Ordinance number 1.636 on first reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the right-of-way purchase and sale agreement by and between Crossroads Community Church Incorporated and the town of Parker for a portion of Lot 1A, Block 1, Parker Auto Plaza, filing number 1, First Amendment for the Lincoln Avenue Widening Project, and ordinance number 1.638 on first reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the right-of-way purchase and sale agreement by and between Winegartner Miller Feast LLC and the town of Parker for the Lincoln Avenue Widening Project. Mr. Burke?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Back to my favorite project, the Lincoln Avenue Widening Project. We are getting closer by the minute on completing all of these. So the vicinity map here is showing the parcels addressed in these two ordinances tonight. To the west, there is the Wine Garden Property, also known as the King Supers Parcel. This is Parcels 8, 9, and 11, there are three individual parcels, all with the same owner. And to the east is Crossroads Community Church. Short background in Short background, in July 2023, council approved ordinance 1.589, authorizing staff to proceed with those good faith negotiations to work with the property owners and acquire the necessary right of way and easements for this project. At the beginning, there were 25 property owners that we were negotiating with. And including the two in these ordinances tonight, we currently have signed agreements from 22 of those 25. We have verbal agreements on two others. We're just working on verbiage, and then the other is Stonegate Village Metro District. Again, we have an agreement. We're just working through verbiage on the intergovernmental agreement with them, so very close. So the total cost for these easements for these parcels tonight is $482,200. That funding has been appropriated in the 2024 Highway and Streets Capital Projects Fund. The ordinance is required to approve these purchase and sale agreements, and the project cannot proceed without their approval. The next couple of slides will just show kind of a general overview of where these are at. This is parcels eight and nine, where the King Supers entrance road to the to the west of it and then east of Jordan Road. We have some right of way from both of these parcels. Behind that right of way, we have an existing easement, so that's why you don't see a shaded region there. And then we have some temporary construction easement behind it for grading and resetting some landscape wall that is currently there. To the east of their entrance, again, it's a small piece of permanent easement for sidewalk and then a little bit of temporary, again, for the grading. So it is 5,803 square feet of right of way. It is 491 square feet of permanent easement and 11,386 square feet of temporary construction easement. The total cost for these easements and right of way acquisitions is $402,200. Moving to parcel 27, which is the Crossroads Community Church. This one is permanent easement and temporary construction easement. There's a there's small pieces of permanent easement at both corners, at Dransfeld and at 20 Mile, and then there's a temporary construction easement along the length of this parcel for grading purposes. Total cost for these is $80,000. Staff recommends town council approval ordinances 1.636 and 1.638 on second reading, and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Dyak, you want to kick us off?
Yeah, after these these two, how many more parcels are we close? I know we're close by the minute, but I mean, how many more do we got outstanding?
So it's three more property owners. Stonegate Village Metro District is one. They're currently reviewing a draft IGA, should be getting comments back probably this week on that one. They haven't had any concerns, so I think that's going to move pretty quickly once they get it reviewed. And then we have two more. There's the parcel where the First Bank is at. That one, we have come to an agreement. We're just working through the the language in the agreement, but we're we're there. We're going to wrap that one up this week. The other one is the UC Health parcel. That's one that changed ownership kind of during the process, so we've gotten that straightened out. We've come to an agreement on some sign relocations, and that one's just a matter of cleaning up some language. So you should be seeing that one, probably those three, probably the first of the year.
Right. Thank you.
That's part of the 30 mayor-elect. And he does long ones, by the way. So Councilmember Wilks?
No, actually, you answered my question about the sign relocation, because I know that's something we had discussed a lot, so I'm glad to hear that it has been handled.
Councilmember Hefta?
Glad it's coming along. Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks, any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Rivero?
Just real quick, when we go in and we do construction, we take construction easement, or we even take a physical corner. How do we leave it? Do we leave it as we found it, as it was already improved, or do we leave it dirt? Just tell me a little bit about that.
Yeah, so the temporary construction easements will be the the language in the agreement is they're restored to their original condition. So if we do have to go in and disturb landscaping or disturb sod, it does get put back in its original condition.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will open up for public comment at 8:13 on ordinance number 1.636 and 1.638. Seeing none, we'll close it at 8:13 and bring it back in that reverse order. Councilman Rivero?
No comment.
Councilmember Barrington?
No comment.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No comment.
Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
No comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.636.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.636 on second reading, please.
Second.
So the the agenda says first reading. Is that correct, or should it be second?
Second.
Okay, all right. That was
Rivero and Dyak.
Dyak, Rivero, and I'm sorry, motion was made by Rivero, seconded by Dyak, Rivero?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero, and entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.638 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.638 on second reading.
Second.
Motion is made by Dyak and seconded by Hefta, Rivero?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. And Madam Town Clerk, for the record, that should be second reading, and I introduce those as first reading for the minutes. Okay. All right, going on to sidewalk between Pilgrim's Place and Main Street, Mr. Claus. So we have a ordinance and a resolution, so let me read those in, and we'll take it as one presentation with two votes. Ordinance number 1.93.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to terminate the easement between Jaws Partnership and the Town of Parker dated on or about March 27, 1996, for pedestrian access. And resolution number 24-058, a resolution accepting the conveyance of public sidewalk easement from 19420 Main LLC for Lot 1, Parker Garage subdivision.
Excellent. Evening, Mayor and Council. Here to present to you the pedestrian access easement agreement between Jaws Partnership and the Town of Parker. Excellent. In 1996, the Town of Parker was granted a public sidewalk easement for pedestrian egress. The sidewalk easement spans from Pilgrim's Place to Main Street between Parker Garage and Tailgate Tavern Restaurants today. This easement is in place to allow pedestrians to access public parking to the south and safely engage with businesses on Main Street. In 2022, the Town of Parker engaged AECOM to design improvements to the existing sidewalk between Pilgrim's Place and Main Street. AECOM completed this design in 2024, which included revised lighting, planners' boxes, and a wider sidewalk. The design completed by AECOM requires the bounds and content of the public sidewalk easement to be revised prior to moving forward with the project. An ordinance is required to vacate the existing recorded easement. The property owner has executed their replacement public sidewalk easement, and a resolution is required to accept the conveyance of the replacement public sidewalk easement. Vacation of the ordinance happening first, excepting a resolution following to fix this. For vicinity map, you can kind of see where it's located in between the two businesses. There'll be some planners' boxes kind of along Main Street, some new lighting, pedestrian lighting, and then a revised sidewalk that's existing, making a little bit wider, opening the space up and allowing pedestrians to go from Pilgrim's Place to Main Street and back. An ordinance is required to vacate the existing recorded easement. Resolution is required to accept the conveyance of the replacement public sidewalk easement, and staff recommends approval of both the ordinance and the resolution. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. We'll start off with Councilman Rivero on both of those, the ordinance and the resolution questions.
Thank you. Just real quick, if you would, if you could, Nathan, talk about the need. Why is this sidewalk dated, and what are we doing?
So currently, if you've ever been out there off Main Street in between these two businesses, this sidewalk kind of does a jog to the side. It's got some trees that kind of cover the sidewalk a little bit. There's it's kind of dim lighting. It's not really good for pedestrian egress as it currently is. There's a sidewalk there. There's a brick edger that's falling apart, creating hazards for the public as well throughout there. So it's going to be a good refresher to open that space up and allow pedestrians to egress through there, so that's the main intent, as well as the lighting improvements for better visibility at night, and the planners' boxes to add for the aesthetic as well.
Excellent. So maybe even answering a safety concern, because it's a straight line. It'll be a straight line of sight now versus hidden corners.
Hundred percent, yeah. Straight line of sight and opening up as well as letting pedestrians pass as well, too.
Outstanding.
Councilmember Barrington?
And did you say this is partially funded, or did I read that this is partially funded by CDOT?
I didn't include any funding information on this presentation, but it is partially funded through a grant through CDOT.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
All right. We'll open up for public comment at 8:18 on either the ordinance or the resolution. Seeing no public comment, we'll close that at 8:18 and bring it back in reverse order. Councilmember Hefta, any final comments?
Just excited to use that once we get that done. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
No, I appreciate all the work. Thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah, I've been talking about it for a number of years. I'm anxious to get this one rolling.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Barrington?
I was just going to make a comment about Councilmember Hefta's
Shade structures? Because there is none.
Frequency of going to the tailgate.
It's more like Parker Garage.
No comments, sorry.
I'll just point out, for those of you that have been here, this was the first item we discussed. It was $250,000 from CDOT, $250,000 from PAR for a zero cost to the citizens.
All right. With that, I will entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.93.1.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.93.1 on second reading.
Second.
Motion is made by Wilks, seconded by Hefta, Rivero?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
That passes six to zero, and I'll entertain a motion on resolution number 24-058.
I move to approve resolution number 24-058 on the regular agenda.
Second.
Motion is made by Dyak, seconded by Hendricks, Rivero?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Next up is ordinance number 1.634 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance stating the intent of the Town of Parker to acquire certain property interests for the purpose of constructing and improving Stro Road through the utilization of the town's power of eminent domain and directing the town staff and town attorney to notify all persons affected thereby of the above stated intent of the town and thereby to comply with all pertinent provisions of CRS Section 38-1-101 et cetera relating to good faith negotiations.
Unfortunately, on this one, we had a miscommunication on the presentation, so we're going to bump this one to the next meeting if that's right.
Okay, so council, I'll need a motion to move this to a date certain of?
December 2nd.
Yes, correct. It'll be December 2nd.
Mr. Mayor, I move to to continue this item to a date certain of December 2nd, 2024, please.
Second.
Motion is made by Rivero, seconded by Hendricks. Rivero?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Last up, last up is contracts over 500,000, Stro Road Widening Project Underground Power Line CIP 23-033.
We'll finish strong on this one, of course.
All right.
All right. I'm here to present to you Stro Widening, the Core Electric overhead power line undergrounding contract for contracts over 500,000. So to give a background, so the design of the widening of Stro Road is currently underway, anticipated to be completed by the end of this year. Stro Widening is planned, or Stro Road, excuse me, is planned to be widened, two lanes to the south with the new bridge over Cherry Creek. The extension of J. Morgan to the south will be constructed with this project as well. Existing Core Electric Cooperative infrastructure is within the project limits, and relocation of the existing lines is needed, and the decision was made to convert to underground. So this is a overview of the project. You can see we're widening two lanes to the south, also doing some widening of Stro to the west of Matsumbaka as well. And then also, J. Morgan, you could see on the east side over here, the extension towards the south. The power line currently runs from the J. Morgan intersection all the way to Crowfoot Valley Road, Matsumbaka Road, which and actually heads south on Crowfoot Valley Road. We're doing partial to the south as well, just a couple poles, and then all along Stro from J. Morgan all the way to Crowfoot Valley Road. And this is what the current infrastructure looks like. As you can kind of see, the poles are fairly close to the road, so fitting two lanes between the two poles, the pole and the existing back curb is not going to be possible. So instead of relocating the poles, decided to underground it, which I'll get into the next the next slides. Here's Core's design. As you can see, the dark black line on the south side of the road. They're going to be doing directional boring, pulling conduits, and then pulling feeders. There's some new transformers that are going to be going in for power sources for future intersection, as well as the intersection at J. Morgan that will be established as well. And then some infrastructure that'll be taking place on the west as well. So you can see that line will be undergrounded all the way with directional boring. Get into some more details, too. Approximately half mile of the electrical line will be, electoral lines will be undergrounded along with the installation of multiple power sources, as I mentioned, in a future and existing intersection. All the undergrounding work will be completed prior to the start of the Stro Widening Project. Core will be utilizing one of their contractors to complete the work. Core is estimating approximately one month for payment before the subcontractor subcontractor can commence, and funding for this work comes from the Town Highway and Streets Capital Fund, and then staff recommends approves this contract for $1,389,190. Any questions?
All right. We'll start with Councilmember Hendricks on questions.
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
So it's it's expensive to to put lines underground, but it also is probably safer when it comes to high winds and and with, we've seen power lines cause fires, and so was that part of this, or, I mean, it also just looks so much nicer?
Correct. Yeah, it's multifaceted safety and as well as the looks as well, and it's a lot easier to work around with equipment and stuff, too, for for maintenance and buildings and, you know, et cetera. So there's a lot of safety involved with it, as well as convenience, too. It's a whole lot easier to to do directional boring these days than it is to stand poles and set foundations and that type of thing. So I think it's going to be much easier in the long run than to work around these lines in the future.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivero?
Underneath this, maybe for you or maybe for the Chris's behind you, you mentioned the highway fund, but where exactly does these revenues come from?
I know that there's a undergrounding account that we're using, but beyond that, as Chris can answer.
So currently, the town has a franchise agreement that we executed in 2008, 20 years. A portion of that taxes we collect from the franchise fee goes to undergrounding power lines. Generates about, I think, $350,000 a year, roughly, I think that.
Looks good.
Yeah, but that's what we basically, long ago, the town's first franchise agreement was 1988 for 20 years. It was a priority of town councils to start converting these power lines. And that original, from 1988 franchise agreement, had money, a franchise fee for converting these power lines. That's continued. If you happen to be on town council in 2028, we probably will be bringing back that franchise agreement for renewal, and that'll be a discussion with town council at that time. But that's where the money comes from. It comes from people paying their electric bills. They pay a tax for the franchise agreement, and that's how we get these funds.
Excellent. And we don't have expenditures in this account every year. We stockpile it for carry a balance and then do a project.
Yeah, it rolls up for several years. I am blown away by how expensive power line conversion has become.
Me both.
But it takes several years. We pull up the money and we do one. We did one earlier this year for nearly the same amount for Dransfeld. These are very expensive projects, a lot of labor and materials to do them.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
No, no questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions. Thank you.
And Councilmember Hefta?
No questions, but a thought here, Colorado.
Let me save your comment for the
Okay, sorry.
All right. We'll open that for public comment at 8:27. If anyone from the public wants to make a comment about this contract, seeing none, we'll close at 8:27 and come back to Councilmember Hefta with her thoughts.
Okay. So just so folks understand that the undergrounding of these power lines is in accordance with Colorado legislation and also federal legislation. And so there's many requirements on that to do that. And as a matter of fact, this past year, Colorado legislation is promoting undergrounding and equitable access to resilient energy, and that was as recent as May 202024, in case anyone is wondering about the legality of this matter. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
So what's interesting is at the National League of Cities Conference that I was just at last week, I did a breakout